Call this meeting to order and welcome everybody to today's city council meeting for Tuesday, December the 3rd, 2019. We're going to have the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Warren.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we're thankful for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord, for rest on last night. We thank you for those who are here. We thank you for the students. We pray for them. We pray for their learning and their protection. Father, we ask that you will give us direction to do the things for the people that we serve. We thank you for the privilege of serving others. We ask you, Lord, to bless those who are sick among us and give them recovery. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
We need to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Did it pop up for you, Mr. Montgomery? Okay.
Did we get everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda. We have a couple of add-ons.
Yes, sir. The first add-on I have will be number 11, under new business. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a senior operator for the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading. This item is being added due to a city clerk error.
Oh, come on.
We need a motion.
Make a motion. We had today's agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
The next item I have on the agenda request would be number 12, under new business. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the City of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any city-funded road or utility project. First reading. This add-on is being requested to facilitate the speed of acquiring property and eliminate the necessity for meetings to take place on each acquisition.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
Scott, just for clarification, I'd like for Mr. Mosley to come up and just give the council a brief explanation of the process and how this will help us as far as completing and beginning the projects in a timely fashion.
Wouldn't that look like a one?
What?
This is just to put it on the agenda right now, right?
Yeah, but I'd, we, so that you can vote, put it on if you don't mind, I would like for him to.
Sure, yeah.
That way we don't have questions.
So basically, we just had to do an ordinance for the Viking Drive project. And in order to eliminate having to come up here for each and every project, whether it be state, federal, or city-funded, we're just going to go ahead and do this ordinance so that we don't have to come in for each acquisition. Viking Drive, for instance, has 35 or so acquisitions. And so that we don't have to come in every time and, you know, bring y'all up to speed, we're just going to go ahead and do this blanket resolution or ordinance. And with all these, you know, we're getting DOTD appraisals done. We're following the letter of the law that DOTD uses and their standards. I'm working with Ronnie Smith. He worked at DOTD for 38 years. He's very familiar with the process. And so this is all just about making this process a little smoother. You know, we have to submit right-of-way plans to DOTD, then we have to submit construction plans, and this will just expedite this, all, this whole process.
We're not changing anything that we do. We're doing it by the letter of the law. So all it does is that, in the case that he, if we kept doing the process that we're doing now, he'd have to come with over 100 ordinances, let's say, on the two various projects we have going on. And that takes a two-week time span. So what we're just trying to do is eliminate probably, you know, three, four, five months of, you know, the cumbersome nature of having to come before us each time. So nothing's changing. It's all done again by the letter of the law, and the process is the same.
Did, did anybody look at, instead of just giving carte blanche, doing it by projects? You said there'd be 35 different ordinances? Is that what, what you were talking about for Airline Drive?
Um, so.
Or Viking Drive?
Viking Drive.
I got a point of order, just a point of order. This is inappropriate. See, what we're supposed to do is we're supposed to decide whether we want this on the agenda. And then at the meeting time, we're supposed to have this exchange so you can thoroughly investigate it. So I would, I would discourage anything other than just putting it on the agenda or not putting it on the agenda. And I, there shouldn't be any reason in the world.
I believe you're right.
All right. No, no, no. I want to ask Mr. Hall. We have, when we're adding this on, we have to get public comment. Is that right?
Right.
Okay? So that means that anybody out there can come ask about anything they want relative to this being added.
Okay.
There is no limitation as to what questions they can ask or what the council can ask. Now, that's what I appreciate the statute being for the state of Louisiana. Is that correct? So, but out of whatever you wish to do, I'll concede to that. But I'm making it a point for the record that I don't agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
Because otherwise, why would we ask these people for their comment? Just to say whether they want it or not? No. They can ask questions, so.
You ask them if they object?
No, sir. They can come and speak to what this is about and what it's going to do.
No, they can't.
Well, Mr. Hall?
They can, they can ea, they can either object. And if they, if one person objects, then, then, then I understand that you cannot put it on the agenda.
One council member, a person objecting is really a wrong.
Oh, okay. Well, then, so, so.
I mean, I think it's somewhat ridiculous that we're having this argument over something that we're trying to protect and provide, the expedition of road building, which has been delayed for years because of certain actions or lack thereof. And we're arguing about some kind of procedural issue, but just in the sake of time so that we can move forward. Mr. Mosley, would you please come back up once it's added?
Yes, sir.
That's considering the fact that no one objects on the council.
I wish you would, because I, I do have several questions and comments.
Okay. So any other questions from the council? Then we need to vote as soon as it comes up.
Now, we're just voting to add it.
We're just voting to add it.
Add it to the agenda.
So it is appropriate, as you have said, to ask if there's anyone from the, from the audience that would like to comment or object?
I think you already asked that.
Okay, good.
Let's see. We still need you, Mr. Larkin.
And Mr. Montgomery.
Okay. Got one more?
All right. Next one would be number 13, under new business. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the City of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any state or federal, any federal or state-funded road and utility projects. First reading. This add-on is being requested to facilitate the need of acquiring property and eliminate the necessity for meetings to take place on each acquisition.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
All three items will be added to the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, under recognition of guests, I believe we have some students here. Would you all like to stand up and say your name and what school you're from? Wait, we start with you, Nissian.
I'm Olivia Dayver, and I'm from Parkway High School.
I'm Eunice Howard from Parkland.
I'm Tobias Weber from Dayton High School.
I'm Tobias Washington from Lincoln High School.
I'm Allison Watson, and I go to.
I'm from St. Howard Airline High School.
I'm Karen Callahan from Howard Airline High School.
I'm Paul Peterson, and I go to Bowser High School.
I'm Jackson White, I go to Airline.
Well, welcome. I'm glad you all are here. Hope you enjoy the meeting.
Coleman? Ain't nothing bigger than a bee, is it? Come on, we say every time I have Bowser High School, people here.
So, let's see. We have no committee reports, right? So we'll move on to unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $260,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond issue to be used to contract with AEP SWP code to provide street lighting for Innovation Drive and to provide incidental construction to facilitate the street lighting system. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the water tank rehabilitation and painting project. Two tanks for a total of $4,800,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance transferring $24,900 from the herbicide and mosquito control operational budget chemicals to fund 410 Parkway capital projects, herbicide and mosquito control vehicles. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer sub-basin BCO4 rehabilitation project for a total of $774,000 to come from the sewer contingency fund. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Free, is yours up?
Connor? It's up, but it's not giving me an option. Hold on a second. Can you send it again?
Yay.
Okay. We got it.
Thank you. Adopt an ordinance to rehab the Waller Street gravity main at a cost of $1 million to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $10,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to fund a Christmas and holiday lighting proposal from Red River Lights LLC. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the City of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for the Viking Drive Road Project. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Are you ready for Nick New Business?
I'm New Business.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 2121 Smith Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Council, I'd like to make a motion to continue the demo under new business until December the 17th.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC petitioner Don Tubbs, DT Investment Properties, Lot 7, 8, 9, and 10 of Curtis Park Subdivision, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request rezone from RMD Residential Medium Density to I-1 Light Industrial for a storage warehouse facility.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover investigation, survey cost, and initial repairs of the East Texas Street collapse for a total of $65,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund. First reading.
So moved.
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $151,000 from the 2016 sales tax bond issue to supplement the cost of construction of the Tinsley Concession restroom bid. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Where's Mark at?
Mark?
Well, I just think over so much. Or did they add something to it, or what?
I'm not totally familiar with the project, but I know Mike McSwain designed what he thought would be under budget. And I know that there was a rash of high bids for whatever. And I know Mike McSwain visited with the contractor to value-engineer the project down to a certain budget number, and this is as good as he could do. Is that about right, Jimmy?
Well, what happened is, in order to engineer it down to within budget, it would have taken out toilets and sinks and, and depreciated the deal. What really the cost overrun was the fill required because of flood elevation. That was the, that was the largest segment of it. But the, the reason for the request for the appropriation is to avoid having bathrooms that serve a facility that don't have adequate toilets and, and stuff for the crowds that will be there. I mean, that's a, you know, it, it's something George and then always talked about with CenturyLink, you know, how many women's bathrooms?
Yeah.
And, and he's right, there weren't enough, you know? So anyway, because of the magnitude of the investment, it didn't seem logical to take those components out just to get within budget, and we have the available funds here.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions from the council? Okay, council, cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $900,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond issue to be used to supplement the previously appropriated 1.5 million, with all going towards funding change order quantities for the Swan Lake Road Improvement Project, I-220 to Monica Lot Road, and to include street lighting and to include a traffic signal at Innovation Drive. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
So does this have a study in it for the lights that are going to be at the 220 interchange? But this does get the two lanes, two lanes run through. And there's a subsequent study and a subsequent, it, it takes money for a study, and then study comes back, then you add money for the, for the both lights on the north and south side of I-220 at Swan Lake Road for that exit.
Council, when the thinking is, as those signals may be warranted underneath the interstate, then we would make the request to DOTD to go install them.
And then they have to do the study.
Yes, sir.
They have to, they have to have a, a warrants study for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a wastewater treatment plant operator for the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing engagement of an employment service for the contracting for temporary contract work for the utility department to be used at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Plant due to the increase in industrial customer usage. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to authorize Keynes Landing Subdivision the use of Bossier City Water and Sewer Service. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Approve the 2020 city council meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair water main blowout on Hamilton Road at a cost of $38,927.10 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Funds. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a senior operator for the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the City of Bossier City and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any city-funded road or utility project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
So, so this is, sounds like a great idea, and I'm, and I, and I'm not opposed to this, but what I, so the thing that I regret is that each time those things would come before me, it would, it's kind of a way of informing you and giving you a, a, a sense of the picture of what's happening. And so my question is, is, is there a way that we can accomplish this and, and otherwise not rearrange it? But have a process by which, when these acquisitions are made, that we can then ratify them or acknowledge them, one of the two, by a formal process so that we don't lose the picture, but we don't, it's not required that we authorize each one of those moves. It's, can either of those be done in a formal way like that?
You could have, you could have a list of the acquisitions and the date that they were completed and, and recorded and put together for ratification, you know, after the, after, you know, they're done.
I was going to suggest, you know how Mark gives his monthly report on road projects? Perhaps have a map of each of these properties, and as they're closed, shade them in so we, we could really have a picture and just have a monthly report. I, I think that would be helpful to see how far are we along and the pace of it getting done. What, does that seem acceptable to you? Mr. Larkin?
Yeah, so, so as, as each one of these is done, like, what does a completed project look like? Is it a, so it's a, a bill of sale? Or, let's see, it's a cash sale deed from somebody to the city? And, and, and so what happens is, is you, in, in the process of acquiring the right-of-way, you have a, you have a, a appraisal done. The appraisal comes in, and then you have a offer that's made to owner, and that takes place over time. And then the offer may or may not be accepted, may be negotiated, may go on for quite some time, it's unknown. And then ultimately, that comes to a point where you either have a, a deal or you have expropriation take place. In the case of expropriation, we would still, it would still require.
Yeah, we, we would bring a formal ordinance to initiate expropriation if the second offer, you know, we give the highest appraisal, and we get the second appraisal, they still get the highest appraisal. If that's rejected, then we will come to the council to authorize expropriation at that point on each particular parcel we have to, to do that for. But let's just say four people accept their initial offer, and then we close those four, we can certainly provide a, a, a report or whatever on, on each of the projects, and it'll give you a better understanding on the various projects that we have going on, where we are in the acquisition process and, and where we are in the expropriation process, where we are in, in the deal. Like on Viking, you know, DOTD has to approve the, the, the right-of-way plan, acquisition plan, and then, then the, the first appraisal has to be done, and then it's sent to the owners. And like, like you said, some people may accept it, some people reject it. But ultimately, in the expropriation process, we will come back for individual authorization on each, each issue of expropriation. But getting a report done once a month on where we are on the project with maps will show you how things are developed.
And is the, is the ordinance, let's see, is the acquisition process that you present to DOTD for their approval, does that require or any action from the council?
No. It's just because the DOTD project, every, you know, as you know, every stage has to be approved by them before you, you can't do the appraisals until they approve the, the, the plan. And then you can go forward with the appraisals. But you have to get the right-of-way determined and get DOTD to bless it, then go through all the, all the steps in order to, to do the project.
Their approval is not about the value, it's about the, it's about the schematic of the land that you're buying and how it relates to the right-of-way.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, council?
I can, I, I think I can comprehend the, the road projects. What I'm not fully aware of, the part that says utility. What, what would that, what's the scope of that?
Yes, sir. On a lot of these projects, there's utility and sewer projects that have to be done. All I, all that was included for is things like servitudes, things that aren't just the acquisition of actual land, maybe land under the, under the road. For instance, on the, the Melrose Extension, there's a, there's a road project, and then there's also a utility project. We have to compensate the landowners not only for the roadway used, but also the servitude for using under their land, for instance. Or maybe even going on their land, a construction servitude, where you go on their land, you might have supplies on their land for, you know, a, a limited amount of time, but you do have to compensate them for that.
So, so it's associated with the road project? Not, not utilities that's other than a road project?
No, sir. It is, there are certain instances where it's just a utility project.
Okay. Now, when I'm thinking of utility, I'm talking like our system, like utilities at the Red Water Plant, that type of utility. It's not including those type of utilities?
Um, no, sir. And also, all we're doing, dealing with is the actual acquisition and, and the servitudes to sign on behalf of the city to compensate landowners for a utility project that's already been approved by other methods. This has only given Mayor Walker the, the authority to sign, to sign for these utilities on these projects and, and to acquire and to compensate these landowners.
Thanks.
Mr. Mosley, the ordinance that we approved, number seven, authorizing the mayor to acquire property on behalf. Mr. Mosley, the ordinance that we approved, number seven, authorizing, uh, the mayor to acquire property on behalf of the city and execute any documents and further of, for the Viking Drive, that covers all, I, I think you mentioned there might be 35 different pieces of property that we're gonna be?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So this ordinance for that one project, you're not gonna bring us 35 different ordinances. We've already approved his authority to, to sign those documents, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Are we gonna lose, I, I think we're taking the counsel out of it, you can straighten me out, kind of on the loop of what projects we're doing like this, you know, and when we, we give them all to you, how are we gonna know where we're at on what roads and people ask us questions, we're doing, cause we're doing so many projects at once, how are we gonna relate to the people where we're at on these projects or what's going on?
Yes, sir. I can, we can do it however y'all like. I can do it by each individual project. You know, Coleman Street, for instance, that's a project that Mark's going down to Alexandria to meet with DOTD on December 17th. And they're gonna basically formalize the right-of-way plans and a- after the right-of-way plans are finalized, we can begin, you know, acquiring properties and that's about 10 properties. That's just a case where, you know, I would have to resubmit an ordinance and then we'd have to wait till January 6th to actually start acquiring properties for that particular project. But of, of course, if that's the way the council wants to do it, I can do that. I have no problem. Or if y'all would like me to start doing a monthly report on any and all projects, however y'all wanna handle it.
See, that, cause you, you bring up Coleman Street because, uh, I talk to Mr. Strachey, Principal Bossier, uh, a lot, you know, he, he'll call me, what are you doing, you know, but we, we talk a lot about different things. And I wanna keep him abreast of what's going on, especially on that project, because that's the, kinda like the, the one way out, you know, we have an entrance on the other end, but we don't have another way out, you know? Of course, he's gonna have to make arrangements, I'm sure, with buses and football games next year and things like that. That kinda leaves me out of loop of, you don't get updated on where you're at on this project, you know?
Yes, sir. And again, if you, if the council would like me to, however y'all want me to handle it, I can bring y'all up to speed.
Correct me i- if I'm wrong, but we have a, we get a road update, uh, report from Mark. So Mark will tell us, for example, what we're doing on Viking Drive. But often you'll say, we have some property acquisitions, but we don't have a lot of detail on that. So I think, but we, we'll keep Mark's report and then you'll come up and give a report that shows a map with the pieces of property we're trying to acquire and which ones have been closed. I think that would be helpful because we'll get a sense of where are we and what the problems are and how long it's gonna take.
We'll see it progress. See what I'm saying, bubba?
Good to you.
Instead of just saying we have property to acquire. So that, I, for me, I think that would be helpful.
Makes sense to me, too. You have a, um, that would,
We'll have a.
That would keep it in your head.
Yeah, we, we'll see, we'll get a report of how the actual construction is going. We'll have a separate report of the acquisition since it's such a, a big job.
And that's fine. Mark and I, we usually are talking before these meetings anyway, so, um, we can, I can talk about the acquisition process after he's done.
We've bored our audience.
What you, uh?
This is the most you've ever talked, Gordon.
The most. Would you be able to share, um, what, what prompted this? Is there a particular project right now that prompted it?
Um, not in particular, no, sir. You know, Viking Drive is the first project that I've started with Ron, and, and Ronnie has started in and of itself. And so he, with his experience in other cities around the area, and then, as I said, he worked with DOTD, he just said it's nice to have a clear-cut ordinance that we can always refer to in the deed that lays out, you know, where the mayor, uh, has his authority. And it's, it's more just to formalize what's been done in the past and to expedite the process, but again, I, I'm, I'll do whatever y'all wanna do, uh.
So there's no, there's no project that's behind because of delay currently?
There is projects that are, been delayed because of the process that happened in the past.
Well, and, and I, I can't.
I'm, I'm happy to share that with you. I have a, a file this high. I mean, it would take me a while, but I'm happy to, in fact, I had Mr. Mosley look into that.
Okay.
And, and prior to us, um, when we made the change, if y'all are familiar, and the council voted unanimously to hire Mr. Smith and put Gordon in charge of the right-of-way acquisitions, there was a reason that we did that. And, and there were, uh, very long-time delays that had occurred in the acquisition process. Mr. Mosley and Mr. Smith have streamlined that process, um, and this was just another, um, method that Mr. Smith had brought up, that the way other people, you know, governments do things to expedite the process so that we can get these projects completed as fast as we can. Because we all are very well aware that in the polls, what is the number one thing that people are concerned about here in Bossier City and Bossier Parish?
Traffic congestion.
Traffic. It's over 70 something percent. The mayor has, you know, we can all, uh, um, identify with the fact that that's what's on people's minds. And I think that anything that we can do as a governmental body to expedite that process is something that we should try and, and, and implement. And, and it's not bypassing any type of procedure or law or statute that we've done in the past, other than the fact that he doesn't have to come to us on each and individual, each and individual project. I think the, uh, process that y'all have put up as far as a monthly report to see what the acquisitions are and have been will enlighten you as to what's going on. I'm for anything that we can do that will keep these construction projects on time or ahead of time, especially given the fact, and I've talked to Mr. Williams about it, he's very well aware, he, he was there with me, um, on some of these projects that have been delayed a, uh, quite a long time unnecessarily, you know, due to this process. So, and I'm happy to share that with anybody on the council, uh, to answer those questions.
Any other questions?
Tell me if you wanna ask a question or who need.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mosley, how mu-, and David, Jimmy, I'll chime in, please. How much of a problem will it be to, to just do it like we did number seven on each project, to break them down? I mean, I don't, I don't think we're gonna lose time by doing just, that way, things may come to our head when we do each project. Here, I think we're gonna forget about things, uh, as a council.
But, and I, and that's fine, but if you get a monthly report, in addition to Mark's report on the road projects, you're gonna get actually a map showing you what acquisitions are left to do. So I think you're gonna leave with a better sense of where the project is. I think Mark, when he did his report, uh, was talking about the length of time it's gonna start to, to get Coleman done because it's down the road and, and there's some property acquisitions. So I didn't know till after that meeting, uh, till I talked to Gordon, that there were acquisitions that we, you know, that we had to do for Coleman Street. So you, on every project that we have, you're gonna get, uh, an idea of how many properties we need to acquire and you're gonna get a monthly report on where we're at in the acquisition process, on, on, not that, but just even a utility line. So that, that, you know, we may have a, a water and sewer line that we're running through somebody that we've gotta get an easement on, but you'll get all that. So you, you'll leave here with a, the capability of having an knowledgeable discussion on where we at on the, are on the project. Or if we have a belief that we'll probably be coming to you with a, an initiation of expropriation to get a piece of property out of the way.
Any other questions?
Yeah, hold, hold on, can you hold on just one second? I'm just trying to satisfy, you know. Yeah, I feel like.
I'll, 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 I will add that, uh, we, prior to, I think it was just sometime in the last few years, um, you know, what we used to do, um, is every single time that the MPC would, uh, file a plat, or someone would file a plat with the MPC and then, um, the entity that would file the plat would follow all of the regulations, all of the ordinances and all of the requirements to file the plat. They would present that to the MPC, it would go through that rigorous process. And then, um, and, and then what was necessary is that that plat, each and every plat, be brought and each and every, uh, unit of development in a subdivision come before the council, be reviewed and required a separate ordinance in every case. And, um, it was in recent years, I'm the one that brought it up whenever it came up, but, um, we, uh, we, we no longer do that. What we did is we passed a, an umbrella that, that then ceded that authority to sign those plats that we did each and every time to the mayor to, once the MPC had gone through that process. So the, wha- what's being proposed here, it, it is in fact a business process that I happen to know in other municipalities is the typical way they do it. I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating one way or another, other than I, I do know that what, what they're talking about here is something that's, that's, it's typical and ordinary. And in, and in fact, what we are doing is atypical and extraordinary and, um, for, for what it's worth. I, I, I'm, and, and I, uh, actually think that by bringing this up and then having a map and you could see the map and see what's happening and then having each of the properties on the map identified and then, and, and requesting what the amount that was paid for the properties be on there, then, then, actually, I think I'd have more information than I'm getting now piecemeal in each one. So that, that's the, that's the holistic way that I, I look at it.
Any other questions from the council?
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to comment on this?
One, one, one last question, cause we're coming to it and I, I wanna get it. I noticed that we have, could, could you just tell us why the, uh, why does it take two of these to do one for federal and why aren't these just one? Why are these two different ordinances?
Yes, sir. Um, a lot of, you know, obviously some projects have state and federal funding and then some are completely city-funded. For instance, Viking Drive is a, uh, that's a state-funded project and Coleman Street is a state-funded project, but then, um, other projects, uh, are not state-funded. And so this just delineates between the two, you know, types of projects. Some are city and some are state. And, uh, and it just, that way, with whatever project, we're, we're, with the deeds, they're part of a particular project. And we can list the particular ordinance referencing to that, in that deed, whether or not it's a city, uh, versus state or federally funded project.
So, I, I mean, again, I, not to press the point, but, but why, why don't you just have the two of them together? I mean, there isn't anything that's not, that, is there anything we're leaving off when you do two? Should there?
There's just different processes. Um, the way I've understood it, there's different deeds. With state projects, we use DOTD deeds. With city projects, we, we'll use the city deeds and there's just.
Mr. Mosley, I would like to ask Mr. President, could you please, out of due respect for the speakers and the council, ask the audience if they have something to say to come to the mic?
Yes, if, would anyone in the audience like to comment on this issue?
I just, you know, it, you know, we have a, a rule of order here for everyone that's present that, um, if you need to speak or go talk on your cell phone, we'd appreciate it if you would just, uh, go to the lobby and have your conversation. If not, you're more than welcome to speak here at the mic and, uh, we just wanna treat, uh, everyone with respect when they're at the mic or up here on the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Again, uh, Mr. Larkin, and that's Ronnie Smith, uh, he has experience working with us. He does a lot of acquisition work for Ruston and they, they distinguish between a city-funded project versus a state-funded project.
And we're authorizing all of them in two ordinances?
Yes, sir.
So what the heck, I mean, I just, I, I don't think I'll, I'm, that's good. Uh, you've explained enough. I, I don't, at the end of the day, if, if it's one or two, I just don't see it matter, so I'm good.
I'm still a little unclear. Why would we, why can't we not, as we did in, uh, old business, number seven, Viking Drive project comes up, we give the authority for the entire project and then have the knowledge, why can't we do that as well as get updates monthly and maps and, and just do that for each project? Walterville Bigby Carriage Way, done.
So what are you gonna gain by doing that?
I, I think like some of the other council members expressed, just staying abreast on what's going on.
You are gonna stay abreast. You're gonna get a monthly report, which is much more, as Mr. Larkin pointed out, than you're getting today.
Why can't we get both?
Why, why would you slow down a project for the sake of having to come before the council and, and have these readings? I mean, it's, what purp-, what purpose does that serve outside the report?
It's just one reading, right? Viking Drive?
I believe two, an ordinance is two readings.
Well, we approve it one time and we're done. Do the entire project, correct?
Yes, sir.
After it's approved, comes before for the second vote.
And Mr. Free, just going back to, uh, what I said earlier, you know, with Coleman Street, for instance, Mark's meeting with DOTD on the 17th and, and if they approve the right-of-way plans on that day, we can start closing on the 18th. Whereas if we have to get an ordinance approved, it'll delay it another four weeks, but it's, uh, it, it's whatever y'all wanna do. I, that's just what Ronnie Smith recommended he does with Ruston, uh, and, and it's just a blanket deal. But however y'all want me to do it, I can do it by each project and give the monthly update, whatever's best.
But I guess I, you just pointed out that all, you're, you're got a four-week delay and for what reason? I don't, I, I'm not understanding the purpose of having them come before the council on this to delay the project another month.
Any other comments?
In the, in the light of the fact that we're trying to build roads i- i- as quickly as possible to alleviate traffic problems and the, the council would delay projects, I, I don't understand that. I wish that someone could shed a light on why we wouldn't expedite that process.
Personally, I, I, I would feel informed if, uh, we have the monthly report and, uh, I'd be better informed than we have been in the past, just knowing where we stand on a project. And if we see property not being acquired, then we can ask questions if it's, we get that monthly report and the same properties keep showing up.
And you know the properties you're gonna have to acquire when you mark details or designs, the road projects, you get a list of all the properties that are gonna be, have to be acquired.
I'm just saying, it, it'll be helpful to me to see the map on a monthly basis in the report and, and see what's been acquired and what hasn't, so.
Uh, let me just, I'll say one thing. I don't think nobody ever wants to delay any projects, you know? I'm okay with getting the map. It's, it's gonna have, somebody's gonna put some time in it, cause it's gonna be a lot of detail. And if he shows us everything, I'm fine with it. But after that first time, we'll, we'll know what we wanna add to it maybe.
If you don't like the process, I'm more than happy to go back and rescind.
No, 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 that's not it. I mean, if we get it like we say we're gonna get it and we wanna add something to it, and if, if it's okay to add to it, then I'm okay with it.
That's why we got Gordon.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to please, you know, get everybody on board with, you know, either, either not or, or yay, you know?
Okay, we've had a healthy discussion up here. Any other comments or questions? If none, uh, we're ready to vote. Uh, council, please cast your vote.
Question carried with two against. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any federal or state-funded road or utility projects. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
Same thing on this one, correct?
Yeah, but I wanna. Yeah, but I wanna start this conversation over again. So everybody wake up in the audience. All right, Mr. Larkin, are you ready?
Barely, though.
If there's no other comments, then council, please cast your vote.
I was being facetious.
Oh, ear hurt me. Okay. I already voted for it, too. You caught me too late.
Okay. That motion carries. Uh, Leslie, you need to read an announcement?
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that its meeting to be held Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty, at three P.M. at its regular meeting place, Municipal Complex, City Council Chamber, six twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. The City Council of the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the city of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal or continuation of an ad valorem tax therein.
Okay, so we've had that announcement. Any announcements from the council? Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to say? If none in this meeting, this adjourned.